All right, let's go. Good afternoon, everybody. And it's time to call the meeting to order. And so I would call the Board of Trustees for Ames Community College together and open the meeting. So let's all join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all. Members, you have before you the, or have had, agenda for a while, and I would assume that everybody's had a chance to study it. Excuse me. So are there any corrections or additions to the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Okay, thank you, Carol. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lyle. Is there discussion? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as presented. Public comment.
Good afternoon, sir. There are no public comments at this time.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Moving right along, then we have the consent agenda. And once again, members, I know you've had a chance to review it. Is there any additions or corrections to that? Or any item you'd like to pull out to have further discussion? Is there a move, motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Thank you, Lyle.
Mr. Chair, I will abstain since I wasn't here.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. Okay, discussion, any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor indicate with sign aye.
Aye.
And one abstention, that motion has passed. Okay, now we have the Faculty Association, representative of the Board, or to the Board.
Thank you for inviting me today to tell you a little bit about faculty and what they've been up to. It's been a busy semester, but a really great semester, and grades were due about an hour and a half ago. So I think most faculty are feeling pretty accomplished at this point. But a couple highlights from your report. Sonia Pakane, art professor, has been busy with a few things. She had an exhibition in honor of the National Native American Heritage Month in Ed Beatty Gallery in November. She also participated in the Denver Bazaar Arts Fest at the Rhino Art District this past September, where she gave wheel throwing and trimming demonstrations to fellow art enthusiasts. A really exciting innovative project that our med prep and nurse aid folks have been working on. Heather Brown and Shelley Powell have been creating innovative and free learning tools for our students. They created videos for all 22 testable nurse aid skills. These videos provided a rare tool for our students to use and to review the skills prior to coming to their lab classes. And so the students have benefited tremendously that these tools and these videos allowed for more practice during the lab hours, so that less time is spent discussing the skills and more time is spent practicing the skills. And so they have seen some great results. It's been instrumental for the nurse aid program. Anne Diaz, part-time English instructor, is excited to be leading a centennial cookbook project from the American Legion Auxiliary, which turns 100 next year. She and others in the community are collecting community cookbooks from every state, from all generations, and she's working with some professional chefs and student veterans in the culinary arts programs to recreate a selection of recipes for a full-color coffee cookbook. The project will raise funds for mental health programs for veterans and to help bridge the military-civilian gap through food and by sharing stories and photos. It's a really neat project. Dr. Leslie Morrison, English and Humanities Instructor, worked to bring her Lit 115, so that's Introduction to Literature, students to see author Jennifer Egan, author of A Visit from the Goon Squad in Fort Collins in November. Leslie incorporated Egan's most recent text into her Lit class and plans so that her students could actually meet the author of their textbook at a meet and greet during this large Fort Collins community read speaking event. And then last but not least, the Ames Faculty Association is excited to announce the recipients of the 2018-2019 Faculty of the Year Award. Allison Easley, Assistant Professor of English and Humanities, was chosen as the Full-Time Faculty of the Year. And Kim Bontempo, Psychology Instructor, was selected as the Part-Time Faculty of the Year. These awards honor faculty who have demonstrated excellence in professional development, leadership, service to the college, and connectedness with students. So that's all I have. I think faculty are pretty excited about having a little bit of a break, but also very excited about coming back next year and seeing what spring has in store for us. So, thank you.
Super. Thank you very much. Did you say that some of the, there is a time for the students to interact with the authors of their textbook?
Yeah, so Dr. Leslie Morrison, she, the author was coming to an event in Fort Collins, and so she worked with the Front Range, some Front Range professors, and got an opportunity for these students to basically do a meet and greet with the author of their textbook. It was a really, really cool opportunity.
Wow, that's neat. Yeah. Okay, thank you much. Staff Association.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We had a pretty busy month, the last month. We had several events. First, on November 14th, we held a brown bag lunch where Ames' own Dr. Ryan Maeda came and gave practical tips for how to stay, stay healthy and reduce stress during this busy holiday season. We also, on November 16th, had our annual Fall Semester Weld County Food Bank Volunteer Day. We had about 20 volunteers from Ames, and we boxed food for, that was going to homebound senior citizens that aren't able to make it in for supplies, and we were able to box 409 of those boxes to go out to seniors. So that was really special. We also, yesterday, at the Holiday Social, had our silent auction baskets, and we had 10 baskets that were donated, and we were able to raise $738. And all of those funds will go to provide scholarships for a college for kids.
Okay.
We also had five Ripple nominations for the month of November, and one I'd like to highlight is Vinnie Ogden. He is an instructional designer in the Office of Learning Environments and was nominated by Carrie Noble. Vinnie has helped me and my peers over the past few years with D2L, computers, and technology in general. He is truly an invaluable member of Ames that helps keep classes operating smoothly so our students can have the best learning experiences possible. He has always been open to ideas, remains patient, and is honest yet kind with me. I feel that even though he may work in a quiet corner, he is the one that directly impacts hundreds of our students by helping guide their instructors to do the best they can. Saying thanks, even in a million different languages, can never show our appreciation for him.
Hmm.
And then we have some other staff accomplishments that were reported for this month. Paul Jackson, in Kiefer Library, attended the annual Evangelical Theological Society Meeting in Denver, and he's also completing his fourth year as Vice President of Trinity Lutheran Church here in Greeley. Meg Spencer of FTLC competed, completed a three-credit-hour course in organizational leadership and change, which is the second of four courses as part of University of Wisconsin-Madison Instructional Coaching Certificate. Meg is also serving on the Board of Directors and is a facilitator for a youth empowerment group that prepares pre-teen girls for the chaotic world of middle school with a fun learning experience. I can only imagine what that's like. Carol Garcia in IT took a two-day class for HDI training, felt it was very worth the time with great training and a great instructor. And lastly, Kim Joyner of Admissions, Counseling, and Recruiting was selected as one of 36 current and emerging leaders to participate in the 2019 Leadership Northern Colorado Program. This is a joint initiative of Northern Colorado communities. The Regional Development Program is designed to build human capacity and to identify, define, and address issues facing Northern Colorado region. The six-month interactive program for the 36 selected leaders from across the region will focus on regional issues, regionalism, and regional skill leadership. Congratulations to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. I noticed we don't have a Student Association. What's the problem? No one wants to come back, is that right? Okay, President's Report. Dr. Rothheimer, it looks like you're on.
Thank you very much, and I do appreciate the opportunity to represent Dr. Bornstein while she's on a well-deserved vacation. First thing we'd like to start with is one of certainly my favorite things in the Board meeting is our excellent at Ames report. So if we could introduce our guest.
We actually do have a student who is here, and you'll hang out. Just got her grades about an hour ago, she told me. Brittany Martinez is here with me. She made headlines, Ames headlines, last month when she was named the 2018 Adult Learner of the Year by the Colorado Adult Education Professional Association. In fact, she, she has the award in her hands in the photo up on the screen, along with two of her biggest cheerleaders, Michael Peterson and Courtney Oyster, who work in the Ames Adult Education Program. Brittany has been accepted into the Colorado Department of Education's Adult Learner Ambassador Program, where she will receive advocacy training and serve as a champion for adult education around the state and with Colorado policymakers. She, Ms. Martinez, dropped out of high school at 16. She struggled for more than five years to get her high school equivalency in several different GED preparation programs. The math portion of the test proved to be the big hurdle for Brittany, but she is persistent. She joined the Ames GED prep program, and in less than a year, she had passed all parts of the GED, all told. Brittany and I counted this up, took the math portion of the test nine times through those years, friends, and twice she missed the mark by one point. Like I said, this woman embodies grit. I'll let you tell, I'll let her tell you the rest of her story. I introduce to you the remarkable Brittany Martinez.
Hello. Well, she pretty much said my whole life story. But I can start with saying I am from Greeley. I was born and raised here. I didn't come from an educational background. As long as I could remember, that was the path that I was on. My parents didn't have much of an education. I struggled, and I was, I switched schools on and off throughout my childhood. And I think that did help me, though, to become who I am today. And here I am, I'm going to tell you a little bit more of my story that I never thought I deserved. When I was around the age 16, as she was saying, I was put into the GED program through social services. There, I met a case manager who would be stuck with me for the next seven years. Like any teenager, I got bored, and I became distracted with my studies, even though I just needed one test to finish. Well, come 2013, I tried giving it another shot, and I missed passing the test by one point. At that time, due to the test changing, I had to take all four sections over again, but still couldn't pass my math test. During this time, I started to work at the nonprofit formerly known as the Global Refugee Center. While I worked there, I truly got a sense of what it was like to walk in another person's shoes. And most importantly, I learned something that I will always care with me, and that is the true meaning of love and compassion. As I transitioned out of the GRC, I ended up in another GED program here at Ames Community College over in Cornerstone. Little did I know, this is when one chapter closed and a door opened to a future that I didn't think was possible. I owe a lot of this to not only the case manager who stuck it out with me, but to another case manager who believed in me and pushed me to be where I am today. She not only made an impact on me, it was also the community that they had here at Cornerstone, where they took me under their wing and they gave me a sense of belonging and a life worth living. Through this program, I was finally able to pass my final test and get my GED. But I didn't stop there. I'm currently enrolled here at Ames, where I just ended my third semester. I would like to end by saying the strong foundation that they have here and the encouragement I received at Cornerstone helped me to be here talking to all of you. I can say with confidence that adult education has roots here at Ames, and if we keep striving and giving the extra push, a mother, a young adult, a refugee can have an education like each one of us in this room. I want to thank everyone who is here in this room, including my two big supporters back there, and just thank you for the perseverance and the encouragement that the adult education offers. There is nothing out of reach. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay. Dr. Rothheimer, can you top that?
No, sir. You always present that challenge to me at these meetings.
Okay, well, let's have your try.
Yeah. Well, from the executive vice president standpoint, I have a very quick update for you. From last month, I shared with you a little bit more in-depth with the presentation regarding our Higher Learning Commission Monitoring Report that's due. And today's update is just to let you know that we are on track to submit it. It's due 12/31, but we will have it certainly sent off to the Higher Learning Commission prior to us closing for the holidays. In addition, I just wanted to share some of the steps that we took from the last month as we sent it out to Cabinet, College Council, the AFA Leadership Team, Learning Council, the Registrar, and other groups throughout the college for their feedback. And especially during this time of year when it's extremely busy, one would think that a 10-page paper wouldn't be much to read, but you must also understand that with those 10 pages came about 80 additional pages of evidence and addendums and things. So I wanted to thank the college community for their feedback during this busy time of year to provide that feedback as we work on always continuing, improving what we do for our students and showing that evidence with the Higher Learning Commission. Are there any questions regarding that monitoring report? Thank you. The next item that I have is on your agendas from the interim Vice President of Academic Affairs perspective, is a brief discussion regarding the lab courses and fees, and I think it's very much in line with some of the conversations at the work session. So have a little bit of information for you, and then we'll certainly open it up to questions. And if there's additional details and things that are needed, the deans are here as well should we need to go into a little bit more depth. But I wanted to give you a high-level overview that each year, the academic teams review where we are with our course and lab fees to see really what's changed. And these lab fees are really regarding the consumables and the things that are used in the classes. So, you know, there's different fluctuations in prices throughout the time, and we want to make sure we monitor that closely because our goal truly is, as we've talked about, to maintain that accessibility and affordability of our education programming. And as you looked at the information that was included in your packets, the majority, the large majority of our fees this year have, will be going down. And that is primarily because of the cost changes in those consumable supplies. So wanted to make sure that we noted that and how we look at that each and every year. And while most of the fees have gone down, there are a couple that I want to highlight to you to, to share that might not be as kind of evident. And the first one I want to share is in your reports around the arts and sciences and the lab course fees, and it's regarding the biological anthropology with lab, as well as the forensic anthropology course. And the reason that those fees went from $20 down to zero was a lot of the costs in those courses were for a lot of the equipment, like skeletons and things. And that really should come from department fees and not necessarily consumables that we would charge back to the students. So that's why those fees were eliminated. The next one I wanted to share with you is the art classes, the Digital Photography 1 and 2, and that those fees have been removed. That was really around removing the fee for printer ink. So again, looking very closely at how we, what consumables are used in the classroom, and then if they're truly negligible, not necessarily having fees to charge back to the students. So really getting a sense of how we can maintain that affordability for students. Thanks. Any questions or?
I just got to the page.
Oh, okay.
You know, I'm just curious, on ours, the accounting, computerized accounting, spreadsheet, et cetera, they went to zero, and photography went to zero because of ink. Why is one of them in red?
Oh, I see all the way around.
What?
These are the old fees, these are the new ones.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I got it. You're right. I'm bad. I won't say it.
The red means that it's a new course.
There you go. I got it. Thank you.
And I know some of the significant ones that you're probably interested about as they came up in the work session is looking at some of the fees around our public safety, transportation, workforce development, and that those areas include the aviation. And wanted to highlight for you that some of the increases, if you look at the AVT 208 course, the multi-engine flight, and I know there was a question that came up regarding why we had the increase in those fees, and it's really due to the new aircrafts that were purchased, and that fee only, or covers operational costs and the instructor. It is not a fee to help cover the actual lease payment. It's truly for the operation during that time in which the students would be using the aircraft. So again, mitigating that cost of the student, but then also, as we've talked, regarding our differential tuition, to really put the costs in the programs and courses where we incur them. So again, these are very reflective of those direct costs of operation. And that would be the same for the other aircraft or instructor flight courses that you see those costs are due to the, the new aircraft that the team just flew in a couple weeks ago. And then the last one I want to just touch base on real quick is our allied health and wellness, and this is one where some fees just changed, and it was a good learning for me when I went through these, and the deans have been very patient in some of the questions and getting me up to speed on a lot of the different acronyms and different tests and things that are used throughout their programs. And some of our testing increases, so for example, in the nursing program, the ATI testing fee increase, it's really, the test itself increased its price from $50 to $55, for example. And the test is the Assessment Technologies Institute, and it's really a test prep for the students in terms of their NCLEX and helping them get prepared. And we get a lot of great diagnostic information from those exams that help us improve our, the content and the teaching of the courses. So a lot of great data, not only for the students and their preparation and readiness for the NCLEX, but also for our programs in terms of how we can better prepare the students in terms of different content areas that they might not be as strong in that we need them to be. So those are some of the quick updates around those testing fees. Are there any additional questions or a little bit more detail you want around some of those that either myself or the academic team can answer for you?
Does the Applied?
Questions, anybody?
Does the Applied Technology Center have fees besides welding? I was turning over.
Yes, that is, it's under Business and Technology area, and you'll see, well, these are actually, in those two pages, those are all the fees in that area that we charge So one of them, for example, that was added was the Computerized Accounting and the Spreadsheet Applications in Accounting, and those are for a QuickBooks certification exam and an Excel certification exam. And that was offered to benefit the students because if we put it as part of the program cost, it's actually less expensive for us to do it that way than if the students were to try to do it on their own, and it is a certification that the students can earn that industry recognizes and values.
In EMT, EMS 170 and 171, EMT basic clinical and the clinical internship, those really jumped from 20 to 130. Is that a testing difference, cost difference, or that seemed like a pretty big jump compared to the other increases we have?
Let me get to that page.
It's under EMS.
Oh, yeah. Medical clinic went up.
Oh, EMS testing, it was for Test Bank Platform to help prepare students for the national certification tests.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, members?
Answered my questions.
Okay, moving right along.
It's nice to see so many of these going down. Thank you, everyone, for that.
Okay, Mr. Jensen, looks like you're up.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, I want to change the order of my presentation a little bit, and I want to start with in the external audit report. I first want to recognize the number of staff that are involved in this process. As I've coined a phrase in the past, this is our annual accreditation for the fiscal operations of the college. And so just want to recognize the departments that are involved in this and have them stand to be recognized. We have our Administrative Services Office, we have our Accounts Payable, our Payroll Office, our Accounts Receivable, our Financial Services, our Purchasing, and our Student Financial Aid. This is over 20 people that are involved directly with the audit, and I'd like them to be recognized by the Board. Without their dedication and, and hard work, we wouldn't continue to have the great audits that we do. And now I'd like to introduce Tim Rual. He is the manager for Clifton, Larson, Allen. They are our external auditors, and he'll have a few comments for the Board. Tim?
Thank you, Chair. And I would just echo his sentiments to thank all the accounting staff and Student Financial Aid staff that when we had requests, responded timely and got us everything that we needed for the financial statement and the compliance audit. So as far as going through the financial statements, I don't like to go through page by page. I think I'll focus on a pretty high level of what our, what our deliverables are, and then any changes from the prior year's reports, GASB pronouncements, things of that nature. And I don't expect everybody to be following along in their financials, but I will point out page numbers as I go through. So the first, the first item that I would point out from our end is on page two of the financial statements, and that is our external auditor's report. As you can see, it is in draft format. There are a few quality control procedures we are wrapping up right now and a couple of legal confirmation letters that we are waiting to receive, or we expect to receive those in the next few days, to be able to take that draft off of this. And as you will see, the opinion is not modified in any way, but on page, it would be page three, there's an emphasis of a matter, and all that is, is bringing, bringing to the attention of the readers, the new GASB pronouncement that was in effect for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2018, which is GASB Statement Number 75. And I will touch briefly on that as I move through the report. So the next, to point out that liability, the next page that I will be, that I am moving on to is page 25, which is the second piece of the Statement of Net Position for the College. And about midway through, you will see a line for a net OPEB liability. Now, that's the big, that's the new big item on the financial statements this year. And without going into too much depth, it is para-related, it is very similar. And without going into too much depth, it is para-related, it is very similar in accounting nature to GASB 68, which was implemented a few years ago, and it is a liability that represents future benefits to be paid to retirees of para as allocated to the college based on contributions to the plan. So while we have those two liabilities, the net pension and the net OPEB liability, which reach almost $200 million, where I would focus from an operational standpoint is those are real in terms of those benefits have been earned, but they have been allocated to the college. The operational item that I would focus on is in the required supplementary information where it discloses the college's annual contributions, cash contributions paid to the plan. That is the year-over-year actual cash hit to the university. These are simply liabilities representing larger liabilities of para as a whole as allocated. And please stop me if you have any questions. As I go through.
Real quick.
Sure.
That's okay. I'm having computer problems again, I'm sorry.
Is the para liability the 82 million?
No, it is the 191 is the pension, and then the OPEB liability that's.
Oh, net pension, okay.
The OPEB one that is the new one this year that has a zero in the prior year is about four, four and a half million. I switched pages, so I don't know the exact number.
Okay, thank you.
And then in regards to those two statements, because they have had a significant impact on the financial statements of the college, obviously, I would point to page 56, and there's a discussion regarding the legislation passed regarding para at the state level and how it will affect these liabilities, and what para and the state's controllers' office, when they put these, put these notes together, they wanted to point out that that liability, which is $191 million on June 30, 2018, is expected to reduce when the plan continues to fund itself a little better based on that legislation. So there's a little background of why it's where it is now and where it could potentially be if all of the assumptions of the plan are met in reality. So there's a little bit of background on that. But in this note, it does point out that the liability is essentially twice as much as it would be if the, with, when the funding for para itself is up to par and meets long-term goals. So it's possible, this is kind of a caveat, it's possible this number could reduce significantly in the next few years, however that legislation turns out. And then the other two, the other two deliverable letters that I would point out are on pages 75 and 77, and what those are, and there are no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control or non-compliance related to the single audit, and that's what covers these two letters. They're in relation to internal control over the financial statements and the major programs on the single audit, which is the last piece of the financial statements, of which the major program is student financial aid, which is a significant, significant source of federal funding that is utilized by the college. And there is one, and then there are two other deliverables that are outside of these basic financials that I'll just touch on briefly. Every two years, we're required to perform an audit over state financial aid. Again, that is in draft format, but our expected opinion is to be unmodified, and there were no findings or non-compliance noted with these state student financial aid funds. And the other deliverable that should be in, should be in the board packets is our governance communication, and that outlines our responsibilities, our discussions with management, and essentially kind of a high-level overview of the results of the audit. There were no, as I mentioned, no findings or deficiencies. There is one item in that letter that I would point out. It is not material to the financial statements, it is what's called a past adjustment. Essentially, we have deemed that it is not material to the financial statements to have the adjustment made, and so it is included in the financial statements. All it, it pertains to tax receipts from a prior fiscal year that were recognized as revenue in the current fiscal year. So essentially, revenue is, I believe it was almost $800,000 on the dot higher than it should be, but I did not misstate the financial statements, and it's simply a timing issue related to that property tax revenue. So that is the only item that I would point out specifically in that governance letter. That, those are the, the main components of our responsibilities I did want to cover. I would like to, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay, members, any, any questions? I guess we're good.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Jensen.
Yes.
Thank you to the team, yes. The next part of my presentation, I'll direct the board's attention to the monthly budget to actual report. Again, my comments are kind of sounding redundant from month to month. Our tuition continues to come in stronger than anticipated, anywhere in the kind of three and a half to four and a half percent in tuition, so again, mirroring our enrollment increases that we're seeing. I will point out that, as I did in our budget presentation, our mill levy, our mill levy will come in significantly higher than was budgeted. At this point, we're projecting in excess of $64 million on our mill levy. So, and you'll hear that again in my mill levy presentation at the end of the meeting today during the action items. And also, just always goes to note that we're continuing to receive royalties, so that'll continue to see the other revenue category far exceeding its budget at this point. And up to date for this fiscal year, we received 1.2 million this fiscal year in royalties. That brings our total in royalties received from our newest oil play to 2.8 million that we've received in royalties thus far. So that's always a fun story to talk about. Don't have any expenditure concerns to alert the board on. We feel all budgets are on track, all departments are within their budgets, and so again, I present a very strong budget presentation to you, and would stand for any questions that any members of the board may have.
Any questions, members? I just have to point out that when you look at the budget as is, as is presented, you sure did miss the budgeting on other revenue. Twenty thousand.
Actually, 150, yeah. No, it, yeah, we took a very conservative approach on that, yes. Thank you, Chairman. Yes, we'll, we'll make that note going forward. Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Appreciate your comment.
Thank you, again.
Moving right along.
Some quick facility updates. We have received RFPs for our architectural services for our welcome center and our student union or our college center. We received nine proposals, which involved 14 architectural firms. There were several proposals that combined, a couple architects partnered up. That's remarkable. Remarkable how that kind of interest from the local, the Northern Colorado architectural firms in bidding on this project. So the committee has its work cut out for it as we review those proposals. We hope to have an architect on board by mid-February, and so that process is rolling along very nicely, and again, we're very pleased with the, the number of proposals and the interest we have in our project. I'll lump these three projects together, our ATTC third-floor buildout, our Fort Lupton welding buildout, and our Noco hangar buildout. All, all those projects will start in January, as far as construction, and at this point, they're all anticipated to be ready for spring, fall semester 2019, fall semester 2019. So again, lots of construction activity happening on those three sites. We also, one other item of note, we have, if you've seen on the backside of Cornerstone, we have now laid the foundation for the new IT data center, and the foundation has been put in place. We anticipate the data center to be delivered in the first part of January, and we'll begin occupying that in mid-February. So that project continues to move along very nicely also as we convert our data center Questions on facilities?
Just out of curiosity, Chuck, is there any familiar names in those bids for the architectural design?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so.
Several architects that we've had relationships with in the past.
Yeah.
And so, again, we're very, very pleased with the interest from this part of Colorado, and yeah.
So.
Well, several of them are recognizable as being on parts of our, several of the firms have, that were with the ATTC building, the PSI building, the PERC, all those architects have, have submitted proposals. Again, that's an indication, again, that, you know, we're a good, we're a good college to work for, and that's what's exciting about that, to see that repeat, that repeat kind of business, because there's a, there's no shortage in work in Northern Colorado.
Yeah.
So again, to have that kind of interest from these architectural firms, we're very, we're very pleased.
I just want to say one thing on facilities and stuff, the marquees out here are absolutely incredible at the entrances. They really are.
Thank you, yeah, we've received many positive comments on them, and there's a, as I like to say, there's no, there's no guessing what this place is called.
No.
When you drive by. I like that. I drive that way every day, and it's, it is, it's going to be a very, I think it's going to be a, continue to be a very effective communication tool as we continue to flash different information on those screens, and yeah, no, we've received many, many positive comments. So thank you.
Have you noticed any increase in fender benders? I would think that would be a distraction for some drivers.
We did have to eliminate the video portion of those presentations and have gone to a static, a static picture. The video was a little bit distracting.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's one, one adjustment we needed to make. We had comments received from the city.
Definitely gets your attention.
Yeah.
Cheryl, you were going to comment.
I saw the Greeley mayor Monday night at an event, and it was the first thing out of his mouth was, wow, I love your new signs.
Yeah.
And I thanked him for allowing them, saying, my understanding was that we kind of pushed the envelope on those. And his response was, I hope you didn't have any problems. And I said, oh, of course not. No, everything went very smoothly.
It did. Mike, Mike Millsaps, of course, did an excellent job of carrying that through the city, so Michael, as always. And again, you know, that, that design, that monument look and the, and the screen, you know, we're going to replicate that at our other campuses. We're currently into the design phase for our Fort Lupton campus, so that process is beginning. Windsor, we're going to hold a little bit until we get our final design in place for the new academic building. You know, of course, we have the, the sign on 34 now.
Right.
So those will continue to duplicate that, that monument style with the, with the LED display.
I do have a question about the Windsor sign. I drove past it last night as it was getting dark, and it didn't seem to be lit. Is that, I know we probably don't have power to that specific spot, but do we have any kind of solar lighting or anything on it?
Yeah, we're, we're in the process of getting power to it, yeah.
Thank you.
And speaking of the Windsor campus, excuse me, is, are we making any progress on getting the entrance at that, you know, on the south side there? Wasn't there some talk about that?
There will be, and that is, that is on our project list to start to have those conversations. As we, as we start to get into the design of that space, which will be, you know, it's kind of sequentially, we're focusing right now on the, on the welcome center and the college center.
Sure.
The next phase then of our facilities plan will be moving into the Windsor campus projects. That's where you would then see that kind of engagement with CDOT, the Department of Transportation, to, to look into the possibility of getting a write-in, a write-out option on 34 there.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions, members?
The last, last item on my VP report is to talk about our enterprise resource planning system, that's commonly referred to as Banner. We are, it's our, it's our legacy system. We've had this system for almost 20 years. It's up for renewal, so anytime that opportunity presents itself, we're going to begin an assessment of our, of our administrative system here on campus. So that'll be the first step that we'll be engaging. We'll be looking to hire a consultant to come in and help us understand the user experience, the user accessibility, and then the sustainability of our ERP. And so, this is a, this is a big step to start looking at our administrative system. So just wanted to just kind of put that on the board's agenda to kind of highlight that fact that this is something we're beginning to assess, and that's literally the first step. We'll do an assessment, determine what the best needs are, or what our needs are, and then move forward and keep the board updated as we go along.
Is that how we move data and hold data? Or no, what is?
It's everything. It's our student system, it's our fiscal system, it's our.
It's our dashboard.
It's, it is, it is the administrative software system for the college. So, big step.
There's nothing necessarily wrong with Banner, I mean, other than it's old, but.
Oops.
Did I get into a can of worms?
We have, we have, we have been doing some reviews of the Banner system, and yes, there are, there are some deficiencies that were noted. It is, it's a 20-year-old legacy system, technology that is old. And so, again, these are the questions that we'll really dive into as to the functionality of the existing system, looking at the increased functionality of new products that are out there, but that'll come sequentially. We're first going to assess what's happening now, what do we need, and what's the direction that we want to go to in the future. So again, the first step of probably 100 steps is just taking an assessment, going, stepping back, what's working, what's not working, what could be better.
Do you have any idea of a timeline, just ballpark, or, I mean, not that it really makes any difference.
The assessment portion, we, we hope to have the assessment portion done by mid-February, March. Is that?
Yeah.
So that, for that portion of the project, and that's, that's probably where I'll leave that comment at this point, until we go through that step and determine what direction we want to go, and then we can come back to the board with continued information on that.
Okay, thank you.
So how's that for a non-answer?
Let's see, what does Tim says, we'll continue the discussion.
We'll, we'll make provisions for that comment, yes, yes. So anyway, that's just, and we just wanted to introduce this, because as we move forward on this, this will be a point of conversation for the board going forward. Just wanted to introduce it, let you know where we're taking our first step in that process. So, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my vice president's report.
Okay. Thank you, Chuck. Good job.
Thank you.
Once again, you're on the ball with information that this board would like to have, so. Now we have Tim Olman that's going to tell us about community and college relations.
We kind of adjust this up just to touch here. Just a, just a brief recap from this morning, we had the input from Tonnet on our governmental affairs there, and I think, I thought you did a great job just kind of helping us understand what's going on, where we need to go, and the desire to have more engagement remains. So we'll look at how to, how best to do that and continue to stay in touch with the board on how we can get that squared away going forward, so. And let's see. Again, Chuck, he's, he's left now, but he again stole my thunder, as we were talking about the, the boards, the marquees that are out there, just absolutely fantastic. And I want to, hats off to the marketing team that's in the CCR. They did a great job working with Mike Millsaps and his team to get the images up and get the messages up and all kinds of goodness there. So that's, the work you see up there is, the images are, is that team that has put that together. And as was noted, that we got a little bit of feedback that needed to pull down the video, and the marketing team did not lose a beat. They just, I mean, within, just literally within less than an hour, had it all squared away, and, you know, compliant for the, you know, for the Greeley purposes there. So very proud of them, and getting a lot of favorable comments in the community and throughout the college. Probably some of the most memorable are people that say, I had no idea that Ames did all that. It's like, yeah, we do. So pretty good stuff. And then I also love the piece up there, it says, classes start, what is it, January? So register now, so all good stuff. Last week was also Colorado Gifts Day, and it was a success. We raised, we were, received $5,470 in total donations, and special note of that is we received $5,000 as a special gift from Blue Ocean. And special note of that is we received $5,000 as a special gift from Blue Ocean. And this is a company that's in, that you're familiar with, yes, in Loveland, who support workforce development and really love the contributions that Ames makes tangibly to the community. So, for a second year in a row, they ponied up and did a, did a great job. So, a lot of confidence in what Ames is doing here. And then the last one, because mine's kind of short because we kind of went long this morning on all the government affairs things. Last month, we asked you to kind of help us out. We gave you kind of a task list there and said, Kay, could you help us out? How'd that go? I'm just curious. You know, accountability's a good thing, you know? Working on it all the time, well, if that's the case, let me add to it. So if you look in your black folders I gave you this morning here, you'll see Ames Community College Board of Trustees, and it says December this time. And the first one there is, if you could, I'm sure you've already seen them, check out our images on the Ames Greeley monuments. And if you would, send a note of encouragement to the marketing team, you've got the information there. Again, can't be more proud of them, they've just done an outstanding job, so fantastic. Our, our Facebook pages, continue to like those because they keep changing, we've got all kinds of good stuff there. And then if you would, attend a College 101 session to learn more about Ames. This is the stuff that people in the community, if they want to learn more about the college, they go to that. You've got the website there, you can go there and kind of check it out, see what you think. And if you have any questions, well, Jody in my office, she can answer all those questions for you. And then last but not least, if you find out of anything that's fun and exciting that's happening in Weld County this month or next, please let me know, because it's, you know, we'd like to stay engaged. So, any questions from the board members?
Carrie got ahold of you on the Evans Chamber banquet?
Yes.
In March?
Yes.
Early March.
Glad to do it, yep. All right, well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're back to, oh, no, we're up to Dr. Sarah with her report. And she's not feeling too well, so stand back.
Well, I know, I feel sorry for the person who's going to speak after me, you might want to make sure you spray it well. I have a few updates for you today, just want to touch base on a couple of items, and so I'll walk you through some of the highlights in your packet. First, wanted to just touch base on the score calendar. You notice we didn't have a student representative here today, I think the only student on the entire campus was Brittany, who was spending some time with us. You see in the score calendar, the majority of our events are planned for January. And this is really just to give you an idea of what's coming up in terms of, of getting students on-boarded for, for spring semester. We did have some events, some career coaching and that sort of thing happening in December. This is really a time of year where we start ramping up operationally. We talked about grades being in, I think I just got a report, Kelly, what'd you say, we're 20, waiting on 28 grades? We have folks who are just waiting to update grades and to start running academic standing. All of our folks in our student records office are updating student records as we move through. We also have advising appointments that will be happening through there. One of the items on your agenda I wanted to bring your attention to is the Campus Works Assessment for the Student Enrollment Records and Testing Group. I brought this up to you a couple months ago when I shared that we were going to be asking Campus Works to come in and do an assessment and just help us find where we might enhance our efficiencies and effectiveness. That was completed in November, and so I just want to share with you some of the outcomes and a little bit of the methodological approach so that you have an idea of what that process looked like. Campus Works came to Ames to, to help us better understand our student records area. They, you see in your packet there, there was five different assessment objectives, everything from understanding how we're using third-party software to how our processes are working, and a review of the satisfaction with our current procedures. The methodology was primarily qualitative. We had a total of 102 interviews that were done across campus, folks who participated. We had 14 focus groups that were conducted. And there was also then a document analysis where Campus Works came in and reviewed very heavily our policy and procedure and work manuals to better understand where we might gain some of those efficiencies. The data analysis again was divided into themes and sub-themes. And the results you'll see on that second page there really share with you what, where we landed. So, of course, I always love the opportunity and to talk about our staff. But first and foremost, one of the findings of that study was how incredible our staff were. The assessors really talked about that our staff and faculty are committed to transformation and to the growth and benefit of students. They talked about our reputation in the community and the clarification of the mission and strategic direction and how important that is to our ability to function in the CERT area. The recommendations they provided us were an opportunity to determine if our Enterprise Resource Planning System, so the ERP that Chuck just talked about, really truly does meet the needs of the stakeholders. So, in addition to our coming up on renewal of the contract, this outside assessment added some additional footing to the idea that we really need to look at this and make sure it's, it's meeting our needs and at the end of the day, meeting the users' needs, the students' needs. What we found was many of our processes were manual and paper-intensive. We have, I think last month I introduced Kelly Christman, who's our new registrar, and she is just chomping at the bit to find new ways for us to really start using and leveraging our technology in exciting ways. So I'm really excited to see what happens there. We're also through the strategic plan, going through a complete policy and procedure reformation process. So a lot of our policies and procedures we'll see being addressed here. The assessors talked to us a little bit about curriculum management systems that need examination and really what is that relationship between curriculum management and the registrar's office so that we can better provide a streamlined approach for students. And finally, they talked about stability and leadership and staffing. As you all will recall, or I hope you recall, it feels very tangible for me. In July 1, we did a reorg of the SACE Division. And anytime we move people around and change leadership, that has a significant impact on staff. And I think as leaders, we, we make those changes knowing that it's going to impact staff and we try to do our best to mitigate that. But one of the things that came out of this assessment is that we need to continue to work to really help our staff feel supported amidst those changes. So you'll see then at the bottom of that page, just kind of our direction for our Level 1 and then our Level 1 and 2 recommendations. We're really going to start on some of that low-hanging fruit and, and then see if we can't grow bigger, better as we move into Phase 2. Are there any questions about the CERT assessment and the outcome of that assessment?
Any questions, members?
No.
No.
Looks good.
Looks good.
We're excited.
Great recommendations there.
I think it'll be really helpful, particularly as we're thinking about how can we increase enrollment as Dr. Rothermore works on, you know, a strategic enrollment management plan. This kind of information is very important for us to make sure that the student experience is really healthy.
I just want to say I appreciate all this stuff, getting this information, and appreciate the fact that you're so proactive and rather reactive in getting this information and always standing ahead of the curve, so I think it's great.
Well, thank you, we're certainly, it's a team effort, I think, across the board and, and across the cabinet and the institution. So I think we're all each other's best allies and cheerleaders, so thank you. Next up is the Career and Transfer Services update. Here's our PowerPoint queue. So just wanted to give you a little bit of history. I haven't talked a lot about Career and Transfer Services with the board, and so I wanted to just provide a brief overview. Throughout the last few board meetings, I've noticed some questions coming around about how do we connect students who are going to next institution, how do we help students get employed? And so I wanted to be able to provide this information to you, just so you had a little of context about what kind of programming is happening. The history is back in about 2015, as we were trying to shore up our academic advising model, we needed to take a little bit from our Career and Transfer Services folks. So what was, what was happening is our advisors were also career advisors versus just being academic advisors. And so instead of both areas being able to kind of flourish on their own, we saw them kind of struggling together. And so we made a hard break between Career and Transfer Services and Academic Advising because their mission is truly a little bit different. So in 2017, Dara Lawyer joined us and we've really done a reboot of the Career and Transfer Services process, which has allowed us to move forward. Under her leadership, we've created a new vision and mission, which I think really aligns with the vision and mission of the institution and really helping students get to that next destination. Unlike a four-year institution, our Career and Transfer Services are really designed to help students get to whatever that next point is, whether that's another four-year institution, whether that's employment, maybe that's employment for a while and then a four-year institution. And so there's a lot of diversity there, and so I appreciate the vision and mission put forward. For Career Programming and Services, you see here on the slide behind me, Spring 2018 and Fall 2018 events. These were some very, very busy folks as they worked through the process. We've changed a little bit of our programming as a result of letting go of the AAA, focused on the AAA course that we talked about, but we're filling that with other, other pieces that are really important to helping students understand where are their strengths. You'll see under Fall 2018 Career Assessments, 348. So 348 times did we help a student do a career assessment to find out where are their strengths, where are they best suited as they move forward. On the transfer programming side, this is really exciting because this is something that Ames has been really trying to grow into and not something that I think we've done our best job at highlighting. And so I'm really excited to see this part of our careers, career area grow. We've done a lot of UNC, CSU, CU Boulder campus visits, taking students to other campuses to help them feel comfortable and understand what it's like to be on a four-year campus. We have increased our office hours on the satellite campuses. You can see both there, in the fall, we were at 66 office hours in the spring, or, excuse me, in Spring 2018, 66 office hours, and in fall, 76.5. And this is really important because a lot of our CTE programs are on those satellite campuses, so it's critical that we be able to meet that need. This is kind of the end of the, of the presentation, but I just wanted to show you some pictures here and some of the marketing we've done. In the top-left corner, we have Artie and Claus, who is our UNC mascot. We found an opportunity through working with CCR to find a way to get our mascots together and really encourage that visualization for students to see what that transfer path might look like. On the upper-right corner, we have Public Safety Recruitment Day. This is a day where different public safety entities come in and students get to meet with them and try to find employment opportunities. Lower-left is the Etiquette Dinner. I will share with you, I was at this year's Etiquette Dinner and I learned a lot about what I didn't know. So I'd be very excited to go to dinner with anyone and teach you all of the great things that I know now. I have a surefire way of figuring out how to not grab the wrong glass when sitting at a table. And then finally, you'll see in that bottom-right corner, Artie's visiting CSU. So one of the things we've been doing is, is working to charter a bus so that our students who have transportation issues still have access to going on these campus visits, even if they don't have a car themselves. So, with that, any questions about Career Transfer?
I just, curious, and the bus, like the bus to CSU, is that pretty full? Do you have a lot of takers or?
It's a growing enrollment, and so a lot of times students don't realize how important, I was one of those students. I was way too cool for school and orientation, and, and really what it was is I was really scared. And so students don't know how important it is, and so we see that participation growing, but it takes a lot of outreach and personal connection to help students feel comfortable going, yeah, I think I'll go up to CSU and take a visit and, and see what that looks like. So we keep seeing those numbers increase and hopefully we'll continue to see them increase as we move forward.
All right. Comments, questions, members?
I have just a. I'm sorry to speak over you, just a couple more things that are not on the agenda that I did want to share with you. First, I have some like hot-off-the-presses news, and I'm so excited to be able to share it with you, that on December 10th, our testing center here on the Greeley campus received, became a certified testing center for the National College Testing Association, which is a pretty big deal. We've been working on this certification for about two years. It requires a lot of paperwork, there are 11 different standards that we have to hit that all include things like ensuring test integrity, confidentiality, making sure our staffing is appropriate, making sure our public relations is appropriate. So this is, this is a lot of work. Franz Jacobs, who is back here in the audience, he, he became a new program coordinator and for the testing center and jumped straight into this certification and accreditation effort and made that happen. So the benefits to us really is this puts us on a different level nationally in terms of what are the tests that we can offer and letting folks know that they can come to Ames to take tests, even if they're not students in Ames, which I think is really valuable. Some of those tests that we, that we offer, of course, our placement tests and academic testing, we do GED testing. But we also do the TES testing for nursing exam. We do PAN testing, which is a pre-employment testing for TSA and FBI. We have PSI CATS testing, which now includes drone and drone certification, and we might be increasing our FAA testing. So these are all some really exciting things that we can do that may help us better serve the community in its full capacity instead of just focusing here on our students.
Good job.
So yay, good job.
Congrats.
Testing group. That's pretty exciting. The last thing, and I will, I will try to wrap this up really quick, but I, I wanted to include this for the board. You all have these black and white polka dot bags on your. Okay, I was gonna, did you already look at it?
No, I got it.
Okay, very good. So, these bags come to you from both the Career and Transfer Services team, and they also come to you from our Dean of Students office. And I wanted to share with you, December is a time where we really start thinking about others and, and what that looks like. And as historically, the board has been very interested in how we're supporting our students through the CARE program and the Student Emergency Fund program. So I thought I'd share a little bit of information with you. The number of SEF applications, so Student Emergency Fund applications, was 53. For the fall, we gave out $28,000 for students who were in significant emergency state. The financial aid support for that was another $22,000 that we provided students. Most of the students, the reasons that they needed additional financial support was transportation. So, my car broke down, I have no way to get to school. It was also housing, whether that's something happened to my house and I need to move very quickly. Medical, of course, students who are suffering from medical issues or job change or loss. For CARE reports, we're seeing this number increase immensely, and I think the reason we're seeing it is because this community of folks here is reaching out in such an incredible way to support our students and making sure they're getting connected. Our highest CARE referrals were made to the Student Emergency Fund, to counseling, and to Artie's pantry. Staff resources, we coordinate across departments. And so we're really trying to make sure that we're working with financial aid, we're working with counseling, we're working with disability access services, we're working with folks in the community as often as possible to get students connected to different areas. A couple quotes that I thought I would share with you directly from students. One said, "I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for letting me know about the Ames Emergency Fund. I was just approved and it's going to help me more than you can even know. I'm not used to it being like this, I promise you that. School is way too important to me and I am determined to get past this." Another quote said, "I really can't thank you enough. Honestly, when it rains, it pours," I think we all know that, right? "But your team has really gone out of its way, it's amazing to have the support from such a wonderful community." I remind the board of this because both of these initiatives were initiatives that we brought to you in the last few years and ask for your support and deeply appreciate your willingness to help us move forward. In your bags, what you will find are, like I said, some items from Career Services, but another pair of socks for Christmas. This is what our, our, I thought Trustee Ruckel might like this. These are socks that we give our CARE and Emergency Fund students so that they know that they're, they're in our hearts. We also have a coaster battery pack for you and some other fun items that we give our students who are getting ready for their very first interviews, so.
Okay, super wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great report. Okay, let's see, moving right along, President's Report.
So you have a list, in lieu of, you have a list in your packet from Dr. Bornstein of some of the things she's been involved in over the last month. And I know she also uses this time during the President's Report to allow the supervisors to introduce any new staff in their areas. So who would like to go first? V?
I would like to introduce someone who's been with Ames since 2006, but is new to my department, Abby Summers, who is our new staff executive. She has previously worked as a staff executive for Dr. Weiskever. She's worked in higher education institutions for over 17 years, providing administrative support to high-level administrators. She is dedicated Ames employee and is excited to be in the new role and be part of the HR team.
All right. Super wonderful.
So I'd like to introduce Kyle Baker.
Barker.
Barker, I'm so sorry. Kyle Barker is our newest addition to the Learning Commons. He's the lead learning resource technician. He comes to us from Fort Morden Music College down the road, where he's a distance education technology specialist. For us, Kyle is going to be heading up Computer Learning Lab and Learning Resource Services on Greeley campus, but also overseeing, supervising our LRTs on all the remote campuses. He has a big job and we've been very anxious to fill that position and Kyle's just fitting himself so beautifully. He has his bachelor's degree from the University of Wyoming in Communications and so please welcome him. He's really welcome.
I would like to introduce me. She actually reintroduced me. She has been at Ames for two and a half years as an academic advisor and has recently joined the trio offices, our new program coordinator. We're very excited to have me onboard with us. Her enthusiasm, her excitement for working with the trio students. She is a trio alum and so that adds a lot of great messages to our students. So thank you.
Hi, I'd like to introduce Robin Nebbling. She's been with us since September, but this is the first opportunity I had to introduce her in person to all of you. She's our new Director of Nursing and she comes to us from Community College in Oklahoma, where she actually was Vice President of Academic Affairs, don't get any ideas. And she's also had previous experiences as Directors of Nursing in a variety of different institutions. She's already bringing some amazing changes that we are very excited about. So please welcome her.
Do you remember when you were in elementary school and you had a pen or a pencil? And your classmates would say, "What is your name on it?" Well, I can report to you that this new employee can say, "Why, yes, it is." This is our new Director of our Police Academy, Flip Ames. It's about the same length. It's the unique family spelling. We moved out here from Connecticut five hundred years ago. The first is always long last relative.
So Flip spent 20 years with the Police Department in Laramie before retiring as Division Commander. He moved on to work with the State Department for a good number of years, working civilian police and military personnel issues around the world. His last post was as Senior Police Advisor in Nairobi, Liberia. As a graduate of the FBI Academy and with a bachelor's in criminal justice and a master's in public administration, Flip comes to us well-qualified for the position of Director of the Police Academy. So please welcome Flip.
Then I have two. Kyra and Megan, if you could both stand please.
I have one.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're two, no, I get to go first then. I'd like to introduce Kyra, she's mainly to my left. She's been with us for a couple months now. Wonderful sense of humor she's had to put up with me as the interim Vice President of Academic Affairs.
That's a big job.
Received her Bachelor of Science degree from the University of Colorado and her Master's degree from UNC, I'm guessing that's Northern Colorado? Okay. She recently moved back to Colorado from Kansas City where she was the Administrative Assistant for the Vice President of Academic Affairs at Rockhurst University for seven years. So welcome Kyra. Megan, who is to Kyra's left, graduated from Ames Community College with her Associate of Arts degree in 2001. Her workforce experience includes being an administrative specialist for the city of Greeley in the Community Development Department, the Training Coordinator for the Greeley Police Department, and the Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent for Weld RE 5J School District. So welcome Megan. And the last comment, I'll just say is how fortunate we are to have very two well-qualified, talented candidates joining the Ames family. They really are good.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Dr. Weiskever?
Sorry, I was too slow to say there. So I would also like to introduce Erin Wilson. Please stand. Erin is the new Top Executive, the Vice President of State's Office. She took Angie's spot because I'm still not speaking to the. But you know, Erin is wonderful. She has a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in sociology from CU Denver. She's helped physicians as a caseworker worker for Oak County Women's Services. She's an Administrative Assistant Program Coordinator and Program Director for Banner Health. And she's also served as an Administrative Assistant for both Arapahoe and Weld County District Attorney's Offices. She has been here a week and two days. So seven days total. She's already saving my life. And so I think she's a perfect fit for the job and I'm so excited to have her here.
And I believe that concludes the President's Report.
Thank you. I just, you know, I understand stealing folks from other colleges and four-year institutions, but maybe we ought to have a policy to keep peace in the family that you can't steal from each other. Does, well, that makes sense. I mean, what do you think, Carol?
Well, I think there's a bigger lesson and it is you really shouldn't be annoyed with HR, that can be very dangerous. As a former HR person, I know, so.
Never thought of that. Okay, well, thank you guys and welcome all you new employees. This is wonderful, you're joining one of a heck of a good team, I'll tell you for sure. So, okay, members, we're now to the board calendar. What's, there's events through January, I don't know, let's see here, February, I guess. So is there any additions? Anybody want to add anything to it?
I have one question. I thought the June retreat was down to one day. Are we still looking at two?
I think so. I think we said two in the beginning anyway, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, one day in January, but two in June, so. Okay, moving right along, the other one would be the tentative agenda for the retreat in January, January 30th. And I think we've talked about a lot of these things before. We've made some suggestions as to types of programs, but is there anything missing there?
Regarding the topics?
I'm sorry, Mark?
Regarding the topics?
Yes.
Well, Carol and I will be able to add to the ethics side of that a little bit.
Okay.
We just completed the course. We're the only two board members that completed the course.
Okay, so this was what you did in Denver the other day?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness, wow. I didn't know that. Well, you get to do it again.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, anything? This is sort of the last chance because we won't have a meeting in January. Lyle, did you start to say something?
No.
Okay. So I guess if anybody has any changes they'd like to see or maybe even, whatever, why let Dr. V know and we'll get that programmed in, okay?
Yeah.
All right, now we're back to action items and once again, we have Mr. Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You have before you Action Item 9A. This is our mill levy certification for fiscal year 2019. Each year, the Board of Trustees is required to certify the mill levy for support of the Ames Community College District. Counties included in our taxing district have submitted the assessed valuations for taxable year 2018. Certification values are required to be approved by December 15th. So this is our statutorily required action for the board. You have in your packet some information. I'll draw your attention to the first spreadsheet, the net assessed valuation by the counties that are part of our taxing district. And for those of you new to the board, our taxing district is not only just Weld County, but it's up by school districts. So that's why we see some little parts of other counties included in our taxing district. Granted, 99.9% of our assessed value is in Weld County, but we do receive some property tax revenue from five other counties surrounding Weld County. Anyway, that's the history behind that, that it's, when the district was formed, it was based on school districts, not just county lines. So a little brief history on that. As you can tell on this report, I've historically gone back to fiscal year 2009, excuse me, looking at the assessed values for our whole taxing district. And as you can see, it has continued to increase. This year, the assessed valuation for all the counties is $9.8 billion, which is a significant increase from last year, primarily due to Weld County. The increase in assessed valuation in Weld County was 26.19% increase. And again, as we talked about in the work session, that is primarily due to the oil and gas industry and the evaluations from both production and infrastructure that has been created in Weld County due to that industry. So that's our assessed values. And again, any questions, please just ask them. Go to the second page. And now here is the actual valuation of the assessed values and it's basically, you know, 1/1,000 of the assessed value is the mill levy value. So, and I'll just focus most of my attention on Weld County. The value of one mill in Weld County is $9.88 million, which again, has been a 26% increase from the previous fiscal year. Number of mills that we're levying, 6.299 for our general operations. And then we are allowed to levy mills for any refunds or abatements that were made in the previous year by county. Again, a very small dollar amount, but those are the two components that make up our mill levy that we assess, property owners. The 6.299, I've gone back and looked at records as far back as I can and we have charged that same mill levy since the early 90s. The mill levy has stayed the same for the last two decades. So 6.305 in total mills, that'll be assessed in each of the counties. It will bring in approximately 6.2 or $62.3 million in property tax revenue. So I ask for your approval of the action item. Upon your approval, I will be sending out the signed certifications of tax levy to each of the counties in question and that will put us on the tax rolls for the next year. Any questions by the board?
Okay. Are you ready for a motion then on the first, or do you want?
Discussion if you have any questions or if no, please, action.
Go ahead, Lyle. Anybody?
I believe that that mill levy has stayed the same since the college's inception.
You're right, I think so.
I don't think we have ever raised it, which is a very nice thing to be able to say to people, too.
Okay.
For 50 years.
Yeah, I had gone back as far as I could, but thank you.
I guess that means a couple of us are old enough to remember that. Is that it, Lyle?
Yep, I think.
I wasn't living here, don't look at me.
Unfortunately, you're right.
I think I remember the creation, so.
Yep.
Okay, is there a motion then to, I guess we adopt the certification of tax levies?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to certify the mill levy for fiscal year 2019 as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lyle. Thank you, Carol. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I propose no. That motion is carried.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chair Peterson, thank you, trustees. In your packet, you have the proposed meeting dates for 2019. The board meetings take place at 1:30 PM on the Greeley campus. Exceptions are in March when the meeting will be held at the Fort Lupton campus. In August, the meeting will be held at the Loveland campus. And in October, the meeting will be held at the Windsor campus. Also included in the meeting dates, with your approval, there are two retreats. The first one will be held on January 30th and a second two-day retreat as we stand now is planned for June 26th and 27th with an agenda to be determined. Do you have any questions?
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the proposed board meeting retreat dates for 2019? And I just realized, you're including the proposed board meetings, is that right?
Correct.
Is that correct? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, so, okay.
Correct, both board meetings and board retreats.
And retreats, okay. Is there a motion?
I would move for approval of the board trustee meeting and retreat dates for 2019.
Okay, thank you, Jane. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I propose no. That motion is carried.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Dr. Rothheimer, it looks like we're back to you.
All right, thank you, Chairman Peterson, members of the board. Action Item 9C. Based on the recommendation of the Criminal Justice Advisory Board, we are requesting the board's approval to archive the Forensic Criminology Certificate. The Criminal Justice Advisory Committee cited that there are no specific jobs for which this certificate would prepare students, nor would it aid in specific career advancement. Dean Abernathy's team has met with potentially affected students that have declared this certificate as their primary educational opportunity. Most have already chosen other programs that better meet their career goals and the meetings will continue and a potential teach-out of that certificate has been put together should this action item be approved. I also wanted to highlight within that certificate, those nine courses. Six of those nine courses are already part of the Criminal Justice Program. Two of the courses are part of another program. There's only one course, the seminar course, which after the teach-out, if we go this path, would not be offered and would be archived as well in terms of that program. So in lieu of wanting to make sure that we offer certificates and programs for our students that actually lead to some kind of return or benefit for them as opposed to potential additional expense, we are looking for the board's approval of this action item.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the action item? Item, action item 9C.
I move that we approve the archiving of the Forensic Criminology Certificate.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion? I guess I feel like that that really sort of makes sense if you're, you've got students in a major or whatever that ain't going to get them anywhere. that ain't going to get them anywhere. But at least the courses are still offered in another program, so. So that really makes sense. So, okay. Any other comments or? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. That motion is carried. Okay. That is approved. Now, where are we, members? We're down to comments from board members, it looks like. Anybody want to jump in there? I did that.
Sure, I'll start, since everybody's pointing at me.
Oh, you're quick.
A couple of things. If you haven't been to the Loveland campus, go. The new entrance is just absolutely stunning. It's a major improvement to the facility. And I don't know if they're done with everything yet, but it's gorgeous. They had it open for the Festival of Lights, even though it's not completely done. And it was just wonderful to walk in, and it's a nice big lobby that makes sense, and the doorway isn't convoluted. You just walk in, and it's just so welcoming and beautiful. So thank you to everyone on that. Congratulations to the ag program on the Fort Lepton campus for another wonderful award. They continue to rake them in. And I'm personally very proud of that program. On November 27th, I attended a, what was billed as a conversation with the governor at the governor's residence. It was really not a conversation, but an end-of-year celebration with K-12 and higher ed people. And it was nice to have Ames represented there. And on Monday this week, I attended the retirement reception for Roger DeWitt, who's been president of the Board of District 6. And also is an Ames instructor, teaches anthropology here. And the superintendent asked me if I would make some remarks to thank him for his work with us on the early college. So I was delighted to be able to do that. And it was, it was a really cool Ames event, if you will, because a parent spoke and talked about her daughter's, two daughters' experience here, taking anthropology, two different classes from Mr. DeWitt. And both of them got Student of the Year awards. And now she has a granddaughter who is looking forward to taking his class as a concurrent enrollment student. So lots of kudos for Ames. It was a very nice event.
Okay. Thank you, Carol. I'll start it out. Maybe we're going in order here. But I had a sort of a unique experience that I think is really significant. I got called for jury duty. Yeah, right. Lots of fun. Lots of fun. And I didn't get picked for the jury, thank God. But I had lots of time sitting around, waiting, you know. And to entertain ourselves, those of us that are waiting, oh, we'd bet on what time we're going to get out of there. Or we'd bet on which person that had been called to the jury box would be dismissed next, you know. I made a lot of money in that deal. I got really good at it. But what I want to tell you is that while we were sitting around twiddling our thumbs and waiting, there were four guys, myself included. It sort of ended up in a little conversation and got to talking. And out of the blue, this one person said, you know, Ames Community College is really great. My two sons went there, and they owe their whole careers to what they received at Ames. And the one son, I guess it was, didn't, I think I understood he didn't graduate, but he took the courses that he needed to now become a head of a bank. So, you know, he was, he was really prepared. And these guys had no idea who I was. I didn't, I didn't suggest, well, I'm on the board, you know. Let them go. Let's see what they say. The other, another one said, I graduated from the fire science program, so I could be a volunteer fireman. The other one says, well, I'm training people for truck driving jobs, or hiring people for Halliburton, what it was, for truck driving jobs. And he said the last, I think he said the last six people that he had hired were Ames graduates. So I just give you that. I know that the community supports you. But I just think it is just wonderful, and just literally out of the blue. I, there was no hinting or anything, and they start talking about how great Ames was. And I'm just sitting there, Ames is, not was, thinking, yeah, right on. So keep up the good work, guys. You're doing a tremendous job. Lyle?
Thank you, Dr. Peterson. Well, first of all, another story like from Brittany is just, it's just incredible. And it just epitomizes what Ames really stands for. I just love hearing these stories and seeing these presentations. So we truly are a college of our community and serve our community. So thank you for that, and keep those coming. I love them. The budget continues just to amaze me. I think we are so fortunate. I attended a session back in New York at the conference and sat through and listened to many other schools talk about their budget processes and how they struggle. And I couldn't help but sit there and just feel extremely thankful for the situation that we were in. So I would encourage each and every one of you to thank the people who support this college, not only students, but the industries and the business of our communities for allowing us to be as fortunate as we are. So it's truly remarkable. I attended a couple of events this past month. One of them was the retirement of a couple of paramedics. As you all know, I was a paramedic for 26 years with Weld County. And Mr. Dave Bressler retired, if you'll remember. He was our-
Fellow.
Fellow, our distinguished fellow, last year at the graduation. So he is retired and is absolutely loving it. So I thought I'd share that with you. And he, he still remembers that as one of the absolute highlights of his career. So he was very thankful and said to make sure to thank all of you again. The other was a retirement of, oh, let me go back to that one. I get these things mixed up, how they happen. But at that retirement party, being with EMS for all of those years, I met many, many, many people. And I was actually an instructor and taught a lot of students who have gone on to become paramedics and everything. And a lot of those people from years past were there. I saw people there I hadn't seen in 20, 30 years. And it was absolutely incredible. But the conversation in a group of us came around Ames Community College and their paramedic program. And some of these people are from services that are way outside of Weld County now. But the talk is that amongst these people, that Ames Community College Paramedic Program has become the go-to paramedic program in the state of Colorado. So kudos to Rob, all of your people, and the ones that are running this program. So please pass that on. That was an incredible compliment, I thought. The other retirement I went to representing Ames was at the retirement of County Commissioner Julie Cozad. So she has been a very staunch supporter of Ames Community College through the years. And so I wanted to make sure that I thanked her on having Ames for her support, too. So thank you all.
Kudo that. You know, we're, we're an anomaly to some extent and degree, but we're extremely professional and a caring anomaly. We take great pride with the staff and the faculty. Give this board an understanding of the needs, and objective, and well-thought-out plans of attack and strategies. The stories that Carol talked about, Ray talked about, we all hear those stories. And, you know, when we hear those, that was one of the reasons I got these, got more pins. Because when we hear these stories, I feel like it's here. Here's a little extra special for Ames in hearing that. And it's, so get another handful. Keep in your coat pocket. But it's, it's just an extra special thing. Because we hear those things, you know, not every week, not every day. But then all of a sudden, there's a, it seems there's a slew of them. You know, there's so many people. If you look in this community that started here and got their, you know, Sarah's story is one of them. Dallas Greenfield, it's a story in itself. And, you know, there's a lot of people in this town that have something very special. And maybe that's why we get 6.3 mills, and we're well endowed that way. Thank you, staff, for doing that. Now, I've got a little bit for Sarah. It's the Christmas season. And, you know, the ACCP event that we went to in October was, it was great. Because we're able to dabble. We each picked our little specialty items. The last one that Anita and I went to both was the Allagany Community College. I didn't get the person's name, but I took a picture of her bibliography. And as we head through these holiday seasons, you know, we have to think about our students. They left. Their statistics, this is a community college outside of Pittsburgh. I don't know the demographics entirely. Could be more or less what we have. But some of her stats were surprising as we think of these students coming back. But 52% of those students are food insecure. 50% are housing insecure. 22% are both. 8% of their students are homeless and obviously food insecure. This, this is kind of interesting. It says 45% of all college students are hungry. And 59% of those feel it impacts their academics. They have a food bank and quite, might be similar to ours, but they actually have a freezer, a walk-in freezer, three, two under square foot walk-in freezer. They got through a grant, just FYI, so I know we'll have these things probably coming sooner or later. It, they do keep it in an obscure part of their campus, but it's all volunteer-supported. Students volunteer to help in it. Faculty volunteers, staff volunteers. They don't pay a dime to run it. It's all volunteer-supported. The average student gets about five to six bags of food a month. They have emergency boxes that are ready to go. They're in most offices. Some of these other statistics, you have to think, there's a student that's hungry, and then there's their family members that are hungry. And that's a whole nother event. It says there's, that could, those dependents could be 2X of that student or 4X of that student. We don't know. And they, they rarely have double-dipping people. You know, the students are fair. They don't try to come through the line twice. 67% say it improves their grades. 87% says it improves their focus. 75% states the food for families would be, would be missed. Their families would be missed. 75% of those students that get food say, if we didn't have this, other family members would suffer. Grade point average increases. They served over 196 students. I don't know what that, what that totally means. But these are just some fun facts. I did take some pictures of their bibliography, so I can give that to you. Just, it's something to ponder as we go through this season when there's a need. We do have a cold weather shelter in town, and we got about 60 to 70 people coming to that each night. And that's over by the old State Farm Building. There are some different organizations. You can call the Catholic Charities if you want to volunteer, serve some meals. They also have an interesting survey that Gura was trying to get filled out about if there was, and I don't want to take too long. Might take too long. Gura was doing on, on, was it whether that, there was not prejudice, what's the word, discrimination in housing. And it was kind of a long, lengthy form, and I was sitting there. By the time you get done with the form, you know more about this person's life history than you really thought you wanted to know. But it was very interesting what, what occurs. Of those people, not many said they were discriminated, but the conversation just went on and on. And of course, me, I'm always priding underneath the lid, why they like that and whatnot. So not that I saved anybody that night. But that, that was an interesting survey, if you had time to go down there and help them fill that out. I know that's an ongoing process the Gura wants them to do to get their funding. But it's doing well. They don't have showers or laundry services. That's the biggest challenge. You know, we could probably, we might not be able to fix our homeless issue, but we could make them look a little bit better. I don't know how Evans feels about that. We've kind of shuttled, shuttered Greeley's homeless into South, North Evans and Garden City.
I'm not the mayor anymore.
And so, but it's something that's, it's a, it's a fabric in every community. It's a quilt. It's the lower right and left-hand corners that get struck along the ground of our community quilts. So thank you all. I want you all to have a Merry Christmas. Do what you can to help your neighbor or someone in need. And thank you again.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Jean?
Well, I'll just make a quick comment on two other programs at Ames that are excellent programs that I have been aware of for many years because of my healthcare background. That's the nursing program and the radiology technology program are widely recognized as providing high-quality graduates to not just Weld County. It's all across Northern Colorado, up into Wyoming, into Nebraska. Just excellent programs and, yeah. We're so fortunate in Northern Colorado to have those programs available to the healthcare industry. But Northern Colorado is so fortunate, or so fortunate to have Ames as a part of our community up here. And I, I just think it's, we're all so fortunate to be a part of such a positive program. So I would ask you, keep up the great work and enjoy the holidays, be safe, and enjoy your family.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anybody want to, Assessment of the Board Meeting. Did we get enough information? Did everybody get a chance to talk?
We get information overload. Thank you.
Well, I was going to say, except for Chuck Jensen, and we didn't get enough info there. And I wonder about Sarah, too, you know. She didn't, anyway, so. No, seriously, you guys, you do a wonderful job. I think it's great. Anybody else?
You know, I made this comment to somebody earlier about this packet and about the presentations. And I said, you know, it's really kind of hard to have questions when it's so well-presented. I mean, you read these packets, and you go through there, and I don't know what else I can think of. I don't ask many questions, so obviously I don't think of much. But it's, it's very, very well-done, very well-presented, and very much appreciated.
Okay. Thank you much. Okay. Seeing as how there's no more business, I would echo what has been said several times. And that is have a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And we look forward to seeing you in 2019 for another great year. We're adjourned.
See you next year. Merry Christmas, everyone.